Mayor, Council, thank you all for the opportunity again. I think we, as we continue from me kind of being able to meet with you all, I think we'll see some of these meetings kind of gravitate towards some updates and briefings. Not a whole lot of discussion items in terms of decision making. Obviously, we meet next Monday the sixth for some of that. Nonetheless, I would like to just bring your attention to 125 North Main Street. There had been an identified issue between the boundary lines, between the joint property owners. We were advised on Tuesday, I believe this week, that that boundary line agreement has been executed and that the attorneys were then going to begin drafting the closing documents. So that has occurred. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'll just shoot through these updates real quick. The alcohol referendum-
Kind of like discuss that building a bit for a little while.
Yes, sir. I will get to that.
That's probably a joke that I'll tell you later.
The alcohol referendum, as you recall, there had been some interest in staff preparing some information for you all to consider. I did consult with Lisa and Bill Pickett in regards to a potential resolution for us to consider. It's essentially reflecting state code in terms of if the council wants to move forward with the early Sunday sales of 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., the resolution, I believe, draft resolution is included. Mr. Pickett did state that it wasn't part of form. The question at the bottom of the first page will need to be modified. He and I did reference OCGA three dash three dash seven J one, and it does need to be modified slightly to reflect different language. But that one, Mr. Mayor, that is something that if the mayor and council wants to move that to an actual agenda item for discussion on Monday, I believe we are prepared. However, we still do have some time, I believe. Lisa, if I could, we're looking to get it to the county until August.
What specifically were you referring to change?
At the very bottom, under the yes, right there, that needed to actually be truncated to say something to the effect, Mr. Pickett gave me the co-section, I've just got to insert it.
You replace that with it?
Yes, sir. And then the no was blank, so it would have to be no, the governor authority of the city of Jasper, yes, sir. So that's efficient.
And don't they have to be prepared for Monday?
If you also choose.
Okay.
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't.
Add it to the agenda?
And I did speak with Mr. Mayor under the gateway to the mountain. I spoke with audits, and they are still working on the plan and revisions as the committee reviewed. He stated that he'll be in a position to share those later, but they're not right just yet. But that was confirmed, that essentially the recommendations we provided, he has been reflecting those on the plan set. The planning zoning board ordinance, I don't recall there needing to be any sort of modifications. However, I think in keeping with from Mr. Pickett's advice before, should there need to be some sort of changes, it is appropriate between now and Monday, the second reading, that it could be modified. However, I just am unaware any changes needed. So the one that is in your packet is essentially the one that was included last month for the first year.
Lisa, can you read that?
Yeah, I can read it.
Not tonight, but can you read it?
I can point you.
I agree. You can have stuff.
It's not quite as long.
So if there's no additional ones, Mr. Mayor, that may be wrapped for the agenda book for the second reading.
And that will lead the second reading.
Now, you recall, we did put back on the 2019 paving as updates. In light of some expenses we incurred through Cove Road, we wanted to provide an update of sorts to the council on staff's ideas, finance, and Lonnie and I discussed that it may be prudent to look at phasing, and instead of going out for bid for all 10 miles, to go ahead and go out to bid on about eight miles worth of paving. And then, as GDO, we hear from them, any sort of reimbursements from Cove, that's all the better. That would replenish the splice funds. If not, that would give us a couple more months in between July let, give a couple of months to collect, and then a potential September, October, second phase or a second let for the remaining of the paving for this calendar year.
We've paid the group that did scaling, has it not? Have they been paid?
They have not been, it's been encumbered, but it has not been expensed out yet because we've not, well, to the back, I believe, late afternoon, I've got to open up, but I got an email from somebody with GSI. Presumably, they are now providing us with the invoice, yes, sir.
So we should have better than $1, $2, or $3 million? Would that not be enough to accommodate the payment?
It, I believe it will, and that's what we just wanted to, you know, Lisa, Lisa and I talked, we think it might be. Lonnie and I talked, we think it might be. But just in case the bid came over, or if they were billed that we needed to do, you know, an ankle full depth, or, go ahead, Lonnie.
Mayor, one reason this would rub up is because a lot of the streets is going to be, have to be resurfaced, and it's going to have to be edge milled because of curving gutter. That's an extra cost. There's two or three places that could need deep patching, that's extra cost. And in looking at all those, you know, we're just trying to play it safe and then-
Now, one option we could do is we could do add bid items, to where we could do a base bid, I think we've done others, to where we'll do a base bid of X amount, and then add bid one, two, for additional road miles, to make sure it doesn't exceed the collections. That's an option.
What I see is left, I don't see it getting us anywhere near what we have left remaining. Do you have Bill Wiggerton on this?
I do.
Okay. I, however you want to do it, but I'd like you to get it finished this year, if we could.
Okay, yes, sir.
And you've mentioned to me that you're on this, that you did speak with the commissioner about the splosh.
I spoke with him on Monday or Tuesday to set up a meeting. He was going to speak with a couple of folks internally and get back with me. I know he's been, had a few things going on this week, so my goal was to reach back out tomorrow and to see about establishing that meeting.
And for the council and for the public, the official end of our splosh will be next June. Okay. So got a year left to draw it, and council needs to be working on what we anticipate we need to ask in order to get the splosh. Several things, I, does that talk about for 10 or 15 minutes?
I'm good, sir. I think, I don't want, I want to be sensitive to everyone's time. And if I may, the next update is staff, you may recall, we did solicit the assistance of our engineering firm, Truncy. They have put out the bid, the water tank in your packet, you'll see just the tear sheet, basically. We have requested bids to be back into us on the 20th, so the staff can evaluate the bids, and then be prepared for the June 3rd meeting. We did have just, it's a repaint and repair. We had a couple of items on just a base bid, or just any sort of repairs been identified in the painting. And then there's about seven or eight add bid items that, if you'd like to take a look at the specs and go through those, you may do so. But ultimately, in consultation with an engineer, David Hall, we did not, at staff level, make any other recommendations other than moving one item out of the base bid into an add bid, which was the cleaning of the inside of the tank, since that had occurred last year. So we felt as though we could move that just to an add bid in light of trying to help control the cost for bids. So be prepared for June 3rd, hopefully to have that. And the Veterans Memorial Boulevard, it's unfortunate, Mr. Council Rayfield's not here. The next two items, I know there had been a desire, last month's meeting, to try to coordinate a time where we could honor Mr., I think it's Ray Smith's request, reveal the signs on a Saturday, and then perhaps venture over to the Dog Park and do a re-cutting with Carl Brock and family. So we did, the signs are here, and I don't know, Mayor, if the best way is to just look at today, or Monday, or in a few weeks, to look at schedules for everybody, if Saturdays would be more convenient. That one, I'm not sure how to approach. Just one of those final requests.
Just pick a day, on Saturday or whatever that-
Memorial is my 27th, I don't know if you want to try to take it to that one.
And that's, that was thrown out there for either that Saturday or that Monday, in terms of people perhaps being available.
Veterans Day would be good for the memorial.
Okay.
Dog Park could be anytime.
And in that same vein, Mayor, I know you had asked for staff to get with Mr. Brock and family to attend the May 6th meeting after you all announced him. I do believe that the signage or the slap face marking thing that we do, the marble, is available, Lonnie. I believe it's available.
Yeah.
And I think that we are going to try to confirm Mr. Brock and family, and I think, Mayor, if you still want us to do that Monday's meeting, we can certainly refer to that.
I think it'd be, since we've done it, we're not having to come to make the recognition. That would be this Monday?
And for mayor and council, and for those in attendance in the public, the update on the Cove Road, you do have in your packets a report from GSI Geo-Stabilization Firm that did the lock scaling along with a party engineering firm, EXP, who essentially validated GSI's work to ensure that it wasn't just staff on its own. I did want to just take a moment and describe the actual work itself, was the manual scaling of using the scale bars, hand tools, pneumatic bags, 25 and 70 tons of pressure. This is important. The opinion of the engineers at GSI quoted, "Work performed on this slope has removed all of the roadblocks and masses that were an immediate risk of failure, and has restored safe conditions for the traveling public." So it is noted in their end quote, that they had essentially stated what we did, Mayor, on site of review and evaluating, and subsequently opening it back up to the traveling public some weeks back. I was going to ask, Mayor, if that is something that you all want presented at the Monday meeting, or this update or briefing would suffice, or if you want it to share that comment with anyone else.
No action will be required, so I guess briefed in now would be sufficient.
Okay. And it was on time, on budget, as approved through the April 1st mayor and council meeting. So I will put with finance on the invoice I believe we received. And the next few items are just to, because the fishing rodeo is coming up. Lonnie, if you want to just kind of give a brief update to the mayor and council.
Okay. The sportsmanship club will be moving in next Wednesday morning. Talked to Adam and his crews today, and they are going to be moving in possibly either Saturday morning or Monday morning to start mowing everything and having everything look good, and make sure that they don't have a problem down there. And we'll be ready for them to carry this out as we have in the pack.
And at the time, Mayor, there wasn't really any updates on the lift stations. However, Mr. Hall stated that they did receive some of the necessary equipment to begin work on doing those repairs to the lift stations. So that is moving. At the time, we had not had any updates, but the equipment has come in, and they're going to begin that. And it hasn't been discussed since I've been on board. However, I thought it was worth noting that the talking rock line, that was being essentially upgraded and replaced from two inch to six inch, has been completed, that work. There's some final testing for the, making sure that everything's in proper order, the stuff we needed used for testing materials, et cetera. And we did find out, Mayor, if I could share the news, we've been notified that the request that's been set in motion in the past to increase our permit from EPD from 2 million gallons per day to 2.33, or an increase of 330,000 gallons a day, should be granted in forthcoming next week, as they essentially stated this approved. So we should be receiving the natural permit next week. So that way, it does assist our port treatment plant to be able to grow up a little more.
David told us many times, and we've done the work, that the plant can treat over $3 million.
Yes, sir.
We just don't have the raw water, and the fact that they permitted us based on the mines, and it's, we've been waiting for it for a long time, so it's really great to hear.
David was really excited. And just for mayor and council, what I'd like to do is, in the spirit of still being the new guy, I did want to just use this as an opportunity to transition into what I'd like to eventually get at as a city manager in concert with the mayor and clerk and with council's assistance. Look at items as we see next. I've put the discussion, but it's mainly just kind of given you an item to look at and some supplemental information, that if, if, Mayor, if we put on the agenda for the regular meeting on Monday, we can then have discussion and/or some action taken, I believe. And it does provide you with the information that you can then ask staff in terms of needing more information for the discussion part on Mondays. But nonetheless, the CPL, Clark Patterson Lee, I apologize for the abbreviation, we have seen as a positive, not particularly some of the development activities in consulting with all parties. I felt as though I needed to present an idea for helping to supplement our existing staff without having to hire new staff permanently. This consulting firm would act as an extension of plan review and/or inspections, giving Mr. Underwood and Randy an opportunity to have someone on an on-call type basis. I put in your packet information about the firm. I would strongly encourage you to take a look at that. I have utilized them in the past for employment for plan review, development assistance. So I do have an understanding of their professional services. So that's, a crucial component of that, Mayor, is not just the plan review, but if Mr. Underwood gets a call for inspection, and we've had some scenarios where there's multiple buildings, and we've got some major developments about to take off, this works about him with an opportunity to get some certified ICC building inspectors to come up to aid him in looking through some of the buildings. He could actually quarterback certain scenarios where they could be at one or two places at the same time. Just an idea, Mayor, if we could put that on the agenda, I would appreciate it from operational standpoint.
Okay. Are you going to be looking for a motion to approve this come Monday?
I will, yes, sir. It would be on a, and I'll get a fee schedule.
That's what I was looking for.
Yes, sir. I don't think they put that in there. So it's a per hour basis. I think like the principal is like $75 an hour or 125 if it's, there's a, there's a fee schedule, I'll get. I just realize it's not in there either.
It's something that, the contract would be for what period of time with this group? If we're not happy with the results?
There'll be no, there'll be no obligation in terms of this is on-
Basically, basically, there'll be a resource for you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's what I was looking for, is making sure we didn't commit, because if we get to a point that it's not needed, there's no obligation like a retainer. It's just on an on-call, needed basis. Come up, take a look, they spend three hours looking through plan set, that's what the billable hour. And then whenever we get to the point of inspection, that same reviewer of sorts or inspector come up, take a look, two or three hours, and we're done there.
Just concerned that it could make billing somewhat prohibitive if we depend on that entirely, but we've looked at in the past, possibly having a list of building inspectors that would be certified, that we could recommend to the builder, and then, of course, we could follow up and inspect the inspector. Something we looked at for the growth that we're about to undertake or anticipating. We don't have the staff to catch what's going to happen to us, so that would be a good option, as well as the other one we've been thinking about as well. So you're going to need all of them, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And I don't see any reason why they should not be on the agenda for, I don't commit the city for a long period of time. I don't see an issue with, that's for a resource for you.
And the next item I want to be sensitive to, we are in the midst of a suit for zoning. Mr. Pickett and I had conversed, and it was deemed appropriate, necessary to seek out outside legal assistance. As such, that gentleman will be at Monday's meeting, and I would at that moment ask for an agreement to authorize us to enter into for just that case only. And then he would, then perhaps call an executive session, or we've got an executive session where he could then brief mayor and council on any of his-
Our insurance is not going to cover us with it?
The insurance will reimburse up to $5,000 for an objective relief. However, they would not provide any legal representation. They did advise that we had to go out for that because there was no punitive ask, it was just purely objective.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That was, that was asked.
But they're going to ask for us to pay attorney fees, are they not?
Well, if, if, if it were to get to the point that they-
Will we go to court?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, guys?
And, Mr. Mayor, Peace Park, I have, I believe, called that correctly. I was thinking at the staff level that that's, I think, a very important part of the community, and I wanted to bring it up because we had a request, Jasper Jubilee, through PACO, wanted to utilize that area on the second Fridays and Saturdays of each month. I don't think we have any identified monies in this budget to do a lot of work, but I did one authorization to do some things, an idea that I had was the existing water feature, water, fill that up with some soil and do some planters in the immediate, since we don't have funds to redo, just to kind of add some elements of prudiness, because they do want to utilize that area with some table spaces during those events. I just thought it would be really neat. I think it's a nice area of our community there. So I don't know if that requires a council action to authorize them to utilize public space on the second Fridays and Saturdays of the month from May-
We've approved it for them in the past. Are they asking again to redo?
Yes, sir.
They're going to be doing something every month for the next-
I think, I think it would be good to go ahead and approve it by council, just to make sure that they are covered with it. Might end up someone else trying to have a dent at the same time.
Yes, sir.
And as far as you're renewing or redoing the park, what do you all think about that? It needs, something needs to be done.
There's, is there a spring there? I remember all those years that had a shut that was there for a long time, and then the city bought it and developed a park.
No, there was a, we, what we had, and why it shut down, is it had a little leak, and the leak got worse over the years, and, but it could be done, redone. The well that, with the pump it's located, needs to be waterproofed, and with that, everything else stays inside.
And, Mayor, I think that's at least what I've spoken with a few staff members, is want to make sure that I didn't really do anything to, you know, negate any of the existing, because I think as time goes on, we may identify monies to upgrade it back. So I didn't want to undo just to get back, but at least give you all, or give me, I guess, an authorization too, to do some things that may seem drastic, but I think reasonably could be undone once we-
Well, the original concept, Eno Fielding was white marble. You looked at it, and you were blinded during a sunny day, so we went in and did the vegetation and did the water to kind of dampen that down somewhat, so. It has evolved to where it is now, it's always evolved, so it's not, it's not written in stone, but it kind of is.
And originally, this was going to be kind of a briefing of sorts, but because there wasn't ask, I didn't want to run it by you all for that, so.
But as you know, you can look at that well and see if it's repairable.
Yes, sir.
And if not, it needs to be, it needs to be renovated.
And this one, Mr. Mayor and council, talked to Lisa, and I don't know, Lisa, if we heard back from them about the specific dates. Sometime in August, probably the latter part of August, will need to identify either three days- days or five days of qualifications. So what I'd like for you all to do is, if the mayor, if good, we can put on the agenda for action Monday, to think about how you'd like to direct the staff to notify the county of three days or five days because I think we've.
Little, little background on this, Lisa called me, what, you got a phone call? And usually, we assign the dates from the mayor's office and, and usually, if I had time to think about it, when Lisa called me, I would have told Julie, I told Lisa, told Julie, do what Nelson and Talking Rock does. And that way, they don't have a burden with one or the other. In three days, plenty of time to qualify. And I think that's what they actually got it down to. But I told her five days because I didn't know what the council wanted, five days is two more days than three. And if man can qualify in thirty-five minutes, they guessed all they gave you, so. I don't think, our lady, I don't think it's going to be an issue one way or the other. But it could be on the agenda item and the council's going to approve it. But between that time, I'd like for Lisa to call Julie and find out if Nelson and Talking Rock has a decision and we should meet coincided with them.
And this one, Mr. Mayor, is definitely, I apologize, this, this is not ready for action, but the next is, is an item of Barbara's truck. I don't have any information to present other than to give council a heads up that in two and a half months, the city manager, Phil Spohr, identified some operational needs. So I would like to present you all to June third meeting, an idea on a new Barbara's truck, consultation with the department and with Lisa to look at how we can get some sort of lease in place or get some sort of vehicle that can accommodate the department and then for the community. We do have a service to provide and I just think that at the moment, we are deficient in what we have. So I would like to, for you all to, between now and then, if you have any questions, I can answer, but my goal is to gather a lot of information up on price, on time, getting. The lead time can be anywhere from sixty days to three hundred and sixty. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty detailed, pretty complex in terms of our needs, horsepower, the size. We are unique in our terrain, so it's not just a simple off-the-shelf type truck, so to speak. So I didn't want to go ahead and throw that out there. So I apologize, no, no action right now other than that's another briefing of sorts.
Mayor, you're on the right track in, you're talking about ten thousand pound and eleven thousand pounds.
Yes, sir.
And we went with a smaller size over the years because of efficiency of the truck in the up and down terrain that we do have. Fox Run, you just can't drive any vehicle in there. And if we are able to use the one that we have presently along with the new one, we'd be a lot more efficient with that same size. And I think that's what you're looking for, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So I would, I would like to just give you all the briefings on that now to, and say, I would like for more information to be presented for action, June third. And similarly, for Monday, I would like to have the agenda, Mayor. I'm not fully prepared, as you and I discussed today. I'm still wrapping my head around how I need to approach, but we are seeing an uptick in development. We have an existing system in place of fees and schedules and infrastructure costs. I think it serves us very well. However, I just need to get a better handle on things because when we are approaching raw land along five fifteen and as we do some quality development, there is asking of sorts of how can we accommodate or help to incentivize some development? And what I'd like to do is put together kind of a plan of action to discuss in some detail Monday with some key players and just wanted to give you all that. And so, Mayor, if that's okay, I'd like to add that to the agenda on that. And with that, the last item, you may recall senior packets, Monday, a letter that we had, yes, sir.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Your name?
Yes, sir. We, we do, we do have some guests, Mr. Mayor. We, Land Bridge Development LLC, you've got a letter in your packet, however, just a briefing all. We did advertise for a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission from May the ninth and that was then subsequently the way that we do our advertising in the paper is to then have a recommendation that may be brought before the city council at their next regular scheduled meeting. So I have included that notice in your packet as well, but I believe, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to direct them as, the guests, I did advise them that I think it would be appropriate for them to.
Yes, sir. You may.
Thank you.
That is Mr. Gary Hammond and I apologize if you're out.
Emily Price.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. I've really enjoyed working with the, the city, you know, with Brandon and Lonnie and Sonny. We started, I, I've been in business for twenty-five years in Georgia, primarily doing domain work. My biggest client is Georgia Department of Transportation. Fifteen years ago, I started developing housing around the southeast, primarily in Georgia. I've done thirty-one projects today, twenty-two of which are in Georgia. It's something I'm very proud of. I use a very unique financing technique to, to bring housing to what I call a missing middle piece, but it's definitely working class, low income to middle income. And it's an extremely competitive process to where developers are competing for these finite resources all over the state and the, the state agency, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs can only hand out, you know, what they have each year. And we, we try our best to minimize the pain and I apologize, I'm humbly here today that I'm even in this position to ask you to consider a special meeting, but things just hadn't worked out in our favor, you know, really no fault of anybody. We started our site selection in January and we spent a good amount of time doing due diligence so that we didn't waste anybody's time. That due diligence was with, with Lonnie and Sonny, making sure that we had a suitable site and access to infrastructure and sanitary sewer. We've, we worked very thoughtfully with the landowner, which are the Wiggingtons, and, you know, he has a parcel of land where the assisted living facility was built and we, we took our time to plan out a piece which we thought was appropriate for his long-term needs to sell the rest of it and, you know, what would be suitable for a, a community. What I'm proposing to build in, in your city is forty-eight units, of which will be a mixture of one and two bedrooms. In your packet, I show a photo of the prototype that's being finished in Baton Rouge, Louisiana right now and I show, show you the community space. We, we are in the business of helping people. The rents will range from four hundred and fifty to six hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, which will qualify households at about fourteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And in that, we will also provide supportive services. We're, we're very big now on healthy eating initiatives and wellness, so our, our community will have a lot of community space and congregation space so that we can promote healthy eating, wellness activities, run a clinic once a month to give our residents diabetes checks and other health-related checks. Unfortunately, you know, working with the process here, we were delayed because the planning commission didn't have a quorum and then we missed an advertising deadline. Our, our application to the state is due May twenty-third and the property absolutely has to be zoned for the purpose on or before May twenty-third or it is what they call a threshold failure. I really can't even submit and I'm, I'm sorry that I'm in this position, but I have special financing that I already obtained this year that will make this, this application as a sure thing as possible. I mean, normally, we go in, there's seventy apps around the state, there might be thirty allocations. We can't ever tell how competitive we're going to be, but the state has chosen to give us financing. They'll be our first, first mortgage lender on this, which will put the application score at a level where I don't see how it would not be funded. So we would be able to bring this community to you at the beginning of next year, we would start construction and finish about one year later. So I, I brought Emily with me today in case you had any procedural questions, but what I'm asking is if, if on Monday night, you could consider calling a special meeting that would occur on May twentieth, Monday, since you're used to meeting on Mondays, and that would be enough time for me to submit the application and go forward. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I think I'm familiar with missing middle. Can you, from your perspective, can you kind of explain, make sure I understand it correctly and maybe key in the group on what that means?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent question. So the, the program is called Section forty-two of the federal code and the state of Georgia also has a state housing credit. Those credits act as a construction subsidy to help pay for the financing of the project. And in round numbers, this is about a nine million dollar project of which the sale of the tax, federal and state tax credits will raise about seven and a half million dollars and the balance will be the state loan to the project. In, in, in trade for that financing, we will have to have a land use restricted covenant filed against the property so that we have to maintain this affordable for the next thirty years. So I will be a long-term owner and, you know, business owner in this community and the qualifying incomes will range between about fourteen hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars a month. The state will do compliance checks about every two years and they'll make sure that from a physical standpoint that we're maintaining the property and that, that we are continuing to rent to qualified households. This happens to be age restricted too, so our residents will be fifty-five and older. The, the program, we're not permitted to discriminate against Section eight voucher holders, but this is not a rent subsidy project. In all my other housing projects, there are very few residents that ever have a portable voucher. The residents have to have money to pay their rent and at the fifty-five and older, some of them are still working, others are on fixed income or have assets that they are spending down to pay their rent. So it's, it's a public-private partnership with you guys because, you know, you, you know, we've come in and we've, we've worked with you through the rezoning and it's a public-private partnership with the state for the betterment of the community.
So it seems like if it's age restricted, it's not exactly the missing middle, it's more like the missing twenty-five percent. Because my, and I may be wrong, my, my perception of missing middle is entry-level housing for young people who can enter into those smaller homes at a lower cost and also it allows this group to move into those homes as these smaller families grow. So that, you know, may be my concept of what the missing middle is being used as. Do you help clarify that for me just a little bit or?
So the.
And I don't mean them all being told I'm wrong, so.
Well, the, the, the program can be used for either families or seniors and you can, you can have what we call general occupancy, which have no age restriction whatsoever, but seniors could live there. And that tends to be, those, those types of communities tend to take a different physical place, you know, they're, they're often built as like garden or townhome style, but seniors could still occupy them. And in a community like this, those would often be service workers, civil servants, et cetera, that make, you know, fifteen to thirty thousand dollars a year. We, we chose to go age restricted because of the, the assisted living that's already there because our market study shows a great need for, for housing for, for seniors. But it can be either or, but once we, we decide and we submit, it would be an age-restricted property.
The other question I have, so you, you mentioned in your letter that you have secured financing, but you don't have the project secured. So if you get the project, you've got the financing, so it's not, I mean, I'm just, I'm splitting hairs possibly.
No, the, the piece that is stated as secured is a, a home loan that the state has just awarded to the project that will give us extra points that would then, in my opinion, secure the tax credits that are necessary to complete the, the project.
And did you say this is, you're the first people they've awarded this?
No, they, there was across the state and if my memory serves me, there were nine applications selected across the state to, to receive the home financing. And those traditionally, because of the extra points that are awarded, will, will also be awarded tax credits.
Is that the, the people who approve the financing is that the same folks who would approve the project?
Yes, sir.
With that, Mayor, I don't have anything else, but until time, if there's any other Mayor and Council items of interest, for the good of the word, oh, I apologize. There, there is something that I think I'd like to put on as a special permit. I can brief y'all on Monday. I think we've had an entity in the past utilize LeMunton Park for a barbecue event and a special permit that I can put on for an item on Monday as well, sir.
Okay, but before we go to that, since you've mentioned that already, that'll be on the agenda Monday night. And, but our guest tonight, are you requesting to be on the agenda Monday night? Because we can't make a decision sitting here this evening per your request. So basically, you're here to ask to be on the agenda Monday so you make your presentation more formally that the council could actually vote to, to allow that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
I am the only person, and I'm an attorney that represents Land Bridge and I practice in zoning law and I represent local governments and developers. With, under your, y'all's ordinances, you actually have the power yourself, if you want to, to call meetings so long as you get twenty-four minute, hours notice. Now, I understand you might want to get.
No, ma'am. Matter of fact, I just want to notify John, John, who is running the meeting Monday night, because I'm not going to be here.
Well, then, Mr. John, I guess you're the mayor pro temp. You'd have me afforded that if you, if you wanted to.
I believe so. I believe it early Saturday morning.
But I can certainly understand wanting to ask your fellow council members there.
Absolutely. Definitely, you need to be here Monday and make a formal request and the council will be able to vote then whether to allow your request or not. And I'll read that a little closer next time, but I wouldn't dare make that decision at the campus.
I, I fully understand, sir. That's a good mayor.
Thank you. But with that, if you, are you making an official request to be on the agenda Monday?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add them to the agenda, please.
Thank you very much.
I have one thing to add to the agenda on Monday if we can, about an update on the lots from Jack's going to give us.
Matter of fact, I almost made a note to ask about that, I must say.
It might become a revision.
And in line with that, I think Emily wants to come and give an update on some of the things going on with the chamber as well.
Yeah. I won't watch you on TV. Add that as well, it'd be fine.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
It's going to be a long agenda. It's gonna be a long one, gentlemen. All of a sudden, it's gonna be short for a while. With that, looking forward to being here Monday.
All right.
And thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.